Good evening, everyone. Tonight is our February 20th Budget Workshop. Before we start, would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, Mary Ann will be giving us the rundown on the Board of Education budget.
So, good evening, everyone. So, as I did a few weeks ago, I presented the overview of the budget, the percent increase, a little bit about what was in the budget book, and some summaries of our operating budget, and then the overall three pieces together. So, that was in the PowerPoint that was provided to you that night. And then, we also gave you the budget book. So, this is kind of a different approach this year, and I'm here, I thought, as we always do, we start with mission statement. And I'm not going to re-present, but I would like to just kind of land on the page in our budget book that represents our objects. So, that's that broad scope that I presented the night, two weeks ago, I guess it is now. And that really gives you the broad scope of what our budget is. So, it's on page 19 if you have your budget books, and it represents the various objects of the budget. And again, as you go further into the book, it represents each cost center, and every single one of those line items comes back to one of these. So, I'm happy to kind of approach this whatever way you want. We can start just by answering questions. I can share some more information if that's helpful. We can address certain line items or object numbers. Again, I want to provide the clarification that the council needs and answer any questions that you might have about the Board of Education budget as it stands now. So, kind of at your pleasure.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And may I address you as Mary Ann?
Excuse me?
May I address you as Mary Ann?
Yes, you may, absolutely.
Could you explain more about the out-of-district tuition?
Yeah, yeah.
It's somewhat confusing, and I'd like --
Sure.
Well, I'll let you start, I'm going to have a series of questions about that.
And then, questions, absolutely. So, clearly, that one, if you look at our object report, is a big driver of our budget. We have a $610,000 increase, and our tuition line is going up over $400,000. So, in our budget book, in the back, in the district information section, and it's page 49 is where I'm going to go to, because it gives some detail, and there's definitely background that relates to this page. I'll have to get there, 49, right? And then, we'll start there and then answer some questions. So, here's this projected tuition page. And let me talk about the page and the information, and then a little bit about how we budget for this section. So, the way that it's laid out, this represents a number of students in our district. The top two boxes generally are students who cannot receive all of their education within district because of their specialized needs. So, generally, these are special education students through a planning and placement team process. There's federal law that guides all of this work. Through that, students get their educational plans designed within district when we can meet their needs. But there are students within the district that we serve, that live here in Clinton, that we can't meet their needs within the district, and that's determined through that process. And when that happens, whether it's based on their disability, or the particular instructional needs that it's determined they must have, that we can no longer provide in district, they attend school at what we call out-of-district placements. And so, this page represents at the top, the first part is districts that are considered Connecticut school districts. So, you see ACES and LEARN. Those are actually regional educational service centers, and there's five, six of them throughout the state are --
Part of, they're state-funded?
Yes, primarily state-funded, yes.
Because they're --
Right, and they're considered, and they submit their data to the state, so they fall under whatever the legislative statute is to make them a Connecticut district. And they do receive a lot of their funding from the state. Many of those resks have created programming to meet the needs of students that districts, their regional districts, find that they can't meet in district. And so, those programs are established, and then, we pay tuition to LEARN for the program for that particular student. And the tuitions are set based on the type of programming and all of the different components of that, students' educational, social, emotional, physical, whatever the needs are that the student may have. Sometimes, that tuition also includes an extra staff member who is needed to meet the needs of the student. So, the top section represents the Connecticut school districts as they're classified, the generality of the number of students who are attending one of these programs, right? We also provide some information around their grade level, so that as a board, my board, as well as all of you, have an idea of how much longer that student might be in the district, if they remain in Clinton, and the needs that are being served. And you do see that a lot of the needs start to occur in middle school to high school, where it becomes more difficult sometimes to meet the needs of all of students within district programs. They also, state law, federal law, requires us to provide education to certain students until the age of 21. And so, you see some of these where it shows 12-plus, right? And that's because they would have aged out, they would have graduated if they were in our Morgan School Program, but they are eligible for continued services up to the age of 21, okay? And that's kind of mandated. So, you see that within there.
So, in the first box, what you said, or state or facilities?
Those are Connecticut districts, yeah.
Connecticut, there's 10 children in there.
Yes.
And two of them, charter school, technical school, one of each, very modest tuition payments.
Correct. So, it has to do with the specialized services or specialized instruction that a child may be receiving. So, we definitely have, there are certain schools that our students attend that are paid for by the state or by that district. So, we have a cooperative agreement with New Haven for a number of their magnet schools that our students in Clinton are eligible to attend without then charging tuition to the district. So, there are categories of schools that, the technical schools, the tech school in Middletown is one of the schools that we don't pay tuition for, for those students. But if they have specialized needs where there are additional services that they need based on this planning and placement team and their individualized education program, then the districts are required to pay for those services. So, that's why you see a very small amount for, you know, in one of the cases, it's just under $5,000.
Sure, yeah.
So, their education, their per pupil cost is paid for by the state. We have to pay for the additional services that are related to their specialized needs. Does that make sense? So, the range is just for a small amount of additional services, all the way to the complete educational, physical, emotional, academic, medical, that might be part of a student's package.
Okay.
Okay? And then, the second group is non-public schools. So, there, it's just a classification, but it is a way that we have to report the data to the state, so we break it out this way. And for those non-public schools, again, you see the different types of approved private providers that are out there, and depending on the needs of the students, the match, there's a whole bunch of factors that go into whether a student is placed in a particular program or not. And so, that second group is similar types of programs that may be meeting different needs, and so, the students are placed there through that process of planning and placement team with the parents and the educators here in town.
Are some of those schools in the second grouping for-profit, or are they all nonprofits?
I'm going to turn to Kim Pierce, so let me introduce Kim Pierce. She's our special services director, and that's a question I'm going to give to you. I think I know the answer, but I'm going to let you in.
I think it ranges, I think the answer is that it ranges. But one of the factors that does, can become unpredictable is, you will see there is quite a range in terms of tuition, and we really have to look individually at the student's needs and what the student requires, and that's Mary Ann will strike it as a very difficult process. It's not always based on disability, really based on the individual needs. Our goal is to always, when we can, provide services here in Clinton for our students and to meet their needs right here. There are times where we're not able to do that, whether it be because of the student's needs at the moment, whether it be because of safety concerns. We, at times, we may have to move into Clinton, who are already in out-of-district placements, and that's established through their educational plan. We always look at every student individually. If it's a student who maybe in another district was in an out-of-district placement, but we have programming here to be able to meet the student's needs, we will always look to see if we can provide those services here. But it can be challenging, I think, you know, as Mary Ann will surely talk about, districts across Connecticut are struggling with this very unpredictable lineup.
Yeah, I mean, I assume you probably try to real, because transportation costs is substantial, so I assume you're trying to regionalize where the towns surrounding us.
We do.
So, hopefully, we could merge something where we could set up if we can't do it, because you have a pretty sizable special services, Kim. I guess you're in charge of that, the $7 million budget here?
Yep. We do. In terms of transportation, there are a couple of efforts underway. I think we're, districts facing these similar challenges are looking in some way to be able to regionalize or build consortiums to be able to hold their resources. But one of the first things we do when we have a need is we check with our surrounding districts and colleagues to see if they have students going to similar geographic areas to see if we can try to get in on that and then save some costs, yeah.
Or even just, now, I don't want to call it in my bird here, but even, again, I look at the grouping, second grouping especially, and those schools, and, you know, we and the other four or five towns group together and establish something.
So, that is what the LEARN, the ACES groups have done, is tried to establish those regional pieces to serve the needs of the different districts and what we're seeing. And it can vary year to year. So, two things, and, because I did pull these numbers, in 2010-11, we had about $1.5 million in tuition costs. In 2017-18, six years later, we had $850,000. And in the last three years, we're back up to that 1.5. So, it really is very variable. We had this lowering trend, we've built a lot of good programs in district, but we continue to see needs that, you know, we can't necessarily meet based on the student needs. And so, it's an area that the state legislature is looking at. LEARN actually has developed some programs that we've been able to take advantage of, and yet, the costs are still high, right? And yet, some of the other options would have been much higher. The program that's on here, we've talked about this for years, so those of you who've been here, you see the STRIVE program is an 11-month program, we have four students there. That actually is based right here in Clinton, and it's right here on Route 1 in Clinton. And it's a regional effort that we did back a number of years ago with Madison and Guilford to meet the needs of students who require and are eligible for secondary transition. So, they finished the high school, but they, they're eligible for services to 21. And we were sending students to New Haven for that, we were looking for programs, and the three directors, this was prior to Kim here, got together and said, "We could develop a program locally." It's now called the STRIVE program. We have four slots, and if we have more students, it offsets things. So, that number is at least half what it would have been if we were sending students. So, that was an example of coming together and finding a way to try to reduce costs. LEARN, our regional service center, just did a survey of all of the districts in the LEARN region and asked for this data, exactly, to look at what are the clusters of needs, what are the private outplacement groups providing, what are their costs, and are there specific programs that could be developed, either just districts coming together or under LEARN's umbrella, to try to help reduce those costs? And that could impact transportation, and also could create some efficiencies. The last piece is LEARN actually is part of a state consortium of all of the resks that gets to the point you mentioned of transportation. So, one of the groups down near, it might be Litchfield or Fairfield County, they developed a software that actually, like, it's like an Uber software, like, it maps all of the transportation routes for all of the districts in their region. And LEARN has just written a grant and is submitting it so that they can access that software and kind of do the same thing. So, now, rather than Kim having to call around to eight different directors or send out an email, we can actually go live and look at what the routes are, who's providing the transportation, because that's also a little bit, there are certain groups that can do it, and certain groups that are interested in getting in the mix. And then, it also will give some pricing, so we can look at what different people are charging for different things and get some control, hopefully leverage that, so we can ride-share. But there are times, I have to say, that we've looked to ride-share, and we just can't, based on the student needs, the route, the length of it, you can't have more than one student in the transportation vehicle. So, we really do work hard, and I can attest to, this is a huge driving force. So, transportation, right, overall, special ed tuition, and health insurance and salaries, year after year, are four major drivers, and those are areas that we really have worked very fastidiously in those areas to try to find ways to keep those costs down. This year, you see health insurance, we're reaping the benefit of something, and at the same time, we could have had a very low budget, our tuition costs is going up. That could change. It's fluctuated since January 1st, when we first started projecting for next year, it's changed two or three times, students moving out, students moving in. So, it's a very, I use the word volatile, it's just one that changes, it's very variable.
Fluid?
Yes, very fluid. So, even this year, we are over-budget in this line because we've had several students, we had three students move in who were out of district place, we don't budget for them. And so, that's a piece that we have to make up this year, and fortunately, we can, or we're coming back to the town to say, "We're in this situation." But we haven't done that, we've always found a way to try and do that within our budget. This year is the highest increase I've seen within a year, and we may have another student, actually, that we're going to become responsible for. So, this may actually be less than what the reality is, so.
So, 18 students here, we spent $2 million on 18 students.
Correct, correct. And you'll see, you know, there's a proposal at the legislature that's been out there for a while, the Connecticut School Finance Project is, has been kind of pushing this. It's kind of like an insurance exchange for this, so what it would do is level your costs in a year to make it predictable, but then, the next year, your rate goes way up, right? And everybody's paying into the system. So, as superintendents, our organization has some real concerns about the structure of that, because while in a year it helps you, it doesn't change anything about these fluctuations or the actual costs of the providers. But we also, the state has put in legislation to require contracts with every one of the providers and to make sure that they're under an approved umbrella, and so, they're trying to regulate this a little bit more, because every, every town is dealing with this kind of situation. And tomorrow, we could get a phone call, and I am, you know, another $150,000 in debt, or I could get a phone call, and I now have $150,000 in that budget. So, it's really hard. What we try to do is, we budget, and what we present to you is exactly what we know going into next year, and then, we have to ride it out a little bit. The other piece, though, is in the budget, we also share with you that we do get some money back for students. So, it's called the excess cost grant, actually, I think it's right behind this. And this year, we are getting quite an increase in that excess cost grant. Yeah, it's on page 50, the very bottom of page 50. Just pass it, there it is. So, the excess cost grant is the second one down, and that is reimbursement from the state, but it comes a year later based on the audited actual payments. And what it does is gives you a certain amount of money for the cost in addition to, is it four and a half times your per pupil cost? So, they take your per pupil four and a half times. Anything beyond that, they reimburse back to the town. So, it doesn't come to us, it'll be a revenue to the town. And that amount, it's hard to predict, right? But it is money that comes in a year later, basically. And you can see this year, our number went up. This is the 38478, is, we just got that number, I believe, Carolyn. And so, that was higher than we were expecting and higher than the year before, partly because. What happens, though, is the state keeps some of that money back, and so, every year, the percentage of what they reimburse, they don't reimburse 100% of your cost beyond the four and a half times, they only reimburse a percentage of that. So, this year, I think it's in the low 70s, there have been years it's been 67%. So, it's hard to predict that number, but it is money that does come back to offset it a little bit. Some districts actually try, are required to budget with that offset and try and figure out what that is. In other districts and towns, the town collects it as a revenue a year later, and the districts just budget straightforward, and that's, that's the way we've been doing it. So, it is complex. I can tell you, we work really hard at it, but we have children who deserve and are eligible for appropriate services, and that is a mandate, and it's something that, as a community, we need to do. We're proud of our district programs, and we've been able to educate kids in district and provide really great supports and develop programs, but at the same time, we're seeing needs that are just beyond what we can do and what other districts can do. So, as I said, we had four students whose parents or who moved into Clinton who were already outplaced by another district, and so, that is represented here as well. It's something we're all dealing with, and if you look around, it's a topic of conversation at our superintendent network meetings, and if you pay attention to the legislature, you're going to hear a little bit about specialized costs and trying to contain them. It's a lot, but I'm happy to give more detail. I mean, it is, these represent children in our community, so we give you enough from the financial side, but it, you know, there's confidential information that I can't completely share.
Oh, no, you know, certainly want to --
But I'm happy to answer more questions, or if you look at this, or you hear something, because you can see the variability in the cost, right, for some of the tuitions.
Mary Ann?
Yes?
So, in just, in looking, kind of going back to what we were asking, some of these numbers clearly chip off the page, and there are huge discrepancies in terms of the cost of different programs, but I think what's really important to help contextualize it is, these are really highly specialized programs. These are for students who are really significant, whether they be cognitive needs, mental health needs, and some of these students may require multiple staff members, two or three working with them at any given time throughout the day, which is what does increase the tuition. So, each of these programs are very different in terms of the types of student needs they address, and there is such variability. So, just to help contextualize a little bit in terms of the discrepancy.
Again, I was hoping that the regionalization of this --
Could help this.
-- amongst the superintendents and special services is trying to get something regionalized here within our five, six, eight towns, instead of going all over the state.
So, we have one model, and then, we have LEARN who's really taken on that, because someone has to administrate, be the administrator of the program as well. So, even the STRIVE program, those three towns are part of the Board of Directors, but one of the resks actually helps administer the program, because it, there's complexity to the legal aspects of special education and what needs to be provided and safety and all of those things. So, using or relying on the resks to help do that in more cost-effective ways is important, and as I said, LEARN is collecting all of that data right now and trying to look at the potential of some programming on this side of the river for this region, and then, that would allow students from the other side of the river, which is part of their region, to access here, instead of New Haven or Hartford or some of the other centers. So, we are working on it, it is complex, it is. It's a big one. Other questions or things that people, yeah, go ahead?
I noticed that the second largest percent of increase, although it's not nearly a dollar amount, is liability property insurance.
Correct.
And I believe I read that it's the second year in a row that we've had an extremely high, between 19%, it's high, for an increase, two years in a row. Has the carrier explained to you why our rate is going up that amount?
Yes. So, I may turn to Carolyn in a second, but let me give you the basics of how we've had to budget. So, the liability insurance, where we budgeted it last year, and let me, my pages, I don't have the right PDF viewer to switch it, so I'm going to reference you to the page in the cost center where you can see the line item and the increase, because it's really a two-year increase, and it was a surprise increase in June that came to us of about $30,000 beyond what we budgeted. So, it was a 14% increase over the actuals that came to us in June. Prior to that, we were budgeting, you know, a more typical 3% to 5%. So, if you turn to page 45, I think is where that particular line item is, there it is. So, it's on page 45, and then, it feeds into this object, but you can actually see the property liability. So, in 1819, the actual amount was 217972. And so, when we budgeted for this year, we actually, they were telling us, you know, you could probably come down based on where you were, so we budgeted the 215914. In June, we were notified that we were, they were actually seeing a huge increase, they talked about wildfires in California and all sorts of global things, and they, it was a $30,000 increase. So, this year's amount, our actual amount this year is going to be two, I'm going to turn to you, Carolyn, so it's two, we budgeted 215, 248, 470. Okay? So, that's what we've actually paid so far, and you can see that that's the 1920 actual. And then, from there, they're telling us, at this point, we should budget 10% over last year. So, when we do that, I think it's a little higher than the 248, maybe not. If you do the 10% over that, it gets you to the 273, 317. And so, that's where we're at. We've been pushing, Carolyn speaks to her on a regular basis, and since January, she's been pushing for a number, pushing for a number, but the $30,000 increase was something we received in June and is the actual. And now, they're saying it's about a 10%, 14%, sorry, last year, 10% this year, increase in the liability insurance. And, you know, worldwide markets, it's what's happening in the industry, and that's, that's what they're telling us. So, we budget based on our insurance carrier. So, I can let Carolyn talk a little, because she's been in conversation almost weekly with her to try and push for a number, and this is where it stands right now, so.
I pretty much, you've covered all the topics, but it's an industry-wide increase because of the wildfires in California that drove up prices across the board in the U.S. with regards to property liability, is the way it was explained to us, and as well as what you traditionally think is covered under liability, there's a couple of new areas that are of growing concern that are also driving up costs in the insurance arena, and that includes cyber attacks, the ransomer attacks, and also, legislation has changed which allows people sexual assault, sexual abuse, allows people to file these claims over a longer period of time, and so, institutions, whether they're schools or municipalities, have greater exposure, and so, the numbers reflect greater exposure in these areas, as well as the natural disasters which are currently driving up costs everywhere. We budgeted 10%, that's a conservative number, we're hoping to come in under that.
Well, I know that the insurance industry is the same on a personal basis. I personally had two car insurances that were up 20%, and they claim that that is due to a national average. But if you go shopping, I found that there are companies that haven't yet, at least, incorporated these increases. So, it might be something that you could look at with other agencies to see if they're claiming that the same phenomenon is affecting their rates as well.
I do want to add, we do go with the town, so we do this collectively, and we have an insurance person who goes out to bid for us. So, he does, she does shop among carriers, if you will, with, based on our experience, which isn't really driving as much as what I just described, according to what we were told. And again, we're hoping that the number of -- And again, we're hoping that the number is not the 10% increase that we're arguing for, but for, to be cautious, she did say to put the 10% in there until we have a firm number. But I will, you know, ask her to be explicit about the carrier, so she actually involves in the bidding process.
Get some work done. I think that the two pieces, that, that extension of the statute of limitations for abuse and definitely impacts the arena of teachers, it just does throughout the country. Not in Clinton, but throughout the country and that statistically raises rates, right? And then, I do, the other piece that you've probably heard a lot about that we are covered on is the idea of ransomware. And so, if that happens to us, we do have that as part of our insurance. We have, again, a good network system, we have a lot of things in place, but I think that's an added piece when you look at what's happened to some towns in Connecticut and where they've been and having that extra layer. It's not a, a big price increase, but it, it is something that's there to protect, protect us against that vulnerability. We have a lot of student information and things that, you know, we couldn't live without and that lockdown will be an issue, so. But, we'll get a little more information and find out how she is shopping and what that is and if we have some changes to that, we'll let you, let the council know. Other questions?
Mary Ann, I have questions about looking down the road. I mean, we recognize effectively no savings from closing Pearson. Instead of the budget going up 1.8 million last year, it only went up 1.5, I mean, $500,000. And this year, we're up again, another $600,000. So, and in the meantime, I'm looking again at the enrollment, like we always do. Since 1718, the enrollment has gone down by about 100 students. I mean, I think we just honestly-
So, since, let me just say, since 1718, we've reduced 14.3 teaching positions. And I, I will, I just, I have to, because I can share with the council and I'll share with you, in last year's budget book, we did include a whole page of what the savings were for Pearson. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you-
Right, but I was upset by other increases that took place within the-
Correct, there are, yeah, so overall, the budget increased last year, but we saved just under a million dollars by closing Pearson.
I just don't see this as sustainable for the long run. We have a smaller, smaller population, we have an aging population, we have more and more residents on fixed incomes, over 60 years of age, and it's growth at this, this graphing just isn't sustainable for Clinton. I mean, somewhere down the line, and somewhere very soon down the line, you have to start accommodating what the town can afford versus what the Board of Education ideally wants to bring to the students. I understand that you have goals and objectives and all that, but, but we also have to keep in mind, I always keep in mind, who's footing the bill for this. And I'm going to tell you a story. I was in Joblot the other day, because I do a lot of shopping in Joblot, and I don't know who or how this, the cashier knew who I was, but she took one look at me and burst into tears. She said, "I just moved to Clinton, I bought a house, my," well, she clearly had bought a manufactured home, she said, "the, the property, the monthly fee on her, her manufactured home had gone up by 10%. She was behind on her taxes, she's only been here eight months, she sold her house downstairs, she thought it was affordable." She was literally beside herself, not literally, but she was beside herself, sobbing at her job in Clinton. That's who I think of when I look at a $33 million budget with enrollments that are shrinking. I see that the classroom sizes are 15 at Joel and stuff, which is ideal. It's ideal, that's like a dream situation. I don't think we can afford the ideal situation. I see, there are minor parts that I can see that are people, I know they're people and I know that's extremely painful, but like in Elliott's school, you went from one librarian to three in the space of two, three years. You had one full-time librarian with no assistant and then you have two librarians with, with an assistant and the budget is two and a half times what it was. It was 74,000 and now it's 190 or something.
But there are decreases that offset that, so in the-
I didn't see them and I went over this with a magnifying glass.
And I will, I will share them with you and I can point to the page and all of that.
All right, hang on, I have one more, one more point to make. Not to, the year before Jack Prospect, he upped the guidance counselors at Morgan from three to four. The enrollment at Morgan does nothing but decrease. When we had traditionally had three guidance counselors there for 30 years, why with the declining enrollment, would the, would the need for a fourth full-time expensive employee, because to me, it's always about dollars, exists? And if that person was, okay, all right, so that's my point, is I see personnel that got moved, I know, because we had this, especially last year, the librarian got moved from Elliott and, I mean, from, from Pearson.
Pearson.
I don't understand that.
She teaches at Elliott, she also teaches at Joel, and she also serves as the talented and gifted coordinator in the district.
Is that-
So, so we also moved 160 students, whatever it is, in fifth grade over. So, she teaches there, she teaches at Joel, and she has taken on the role of gifted and talented coordinator for the district, which was part of our plan, which has been something that at this table, in town, through our parent groups, through our community, people have desperately asked for. So, in consolidation and reorganization, that's part of what we did. At the same time, I reduced the Family Consumer Science Program and we eliminated that program at Elliott as we redid the schedule and we restructured the teams. And what we put in place was a library media certified position that relates to a course called Aspire, and I can give you all of the information about that course. That's taught now to seventh and eighth graders. That's a new course. It teaches 21st century skills, our foundation skills that we're talking about. It teaches media, it teaches use of online learning resources, and it teaches presentation, collaboration, and represents all of the foundation skills that we've identified that students need. So, that's a course that took the place of Family Consumer Science and the person certified to teach it is a library media person. So, that's why that person is at Elliott. They've picked up coursework. I don't have a librarian sitting there checking out books, shelving books. I don't. I have two librarians there who are teaching. One is there all day, teaching classes all day, the other teaches there half the day and then goes to Joel sometime during that other half and then serves as the gifted and talented coordinator. So, we did a lot of restructuring. I guess the page I want to point you to, I understand your point. I'm not going to argue that the push of, of budget increases, tax increases, has not forced this community to struggle, has polarized this community, right, and has forced us, which I see now, come to the table to work together and say, "How do we do this?", right? But there's a revenue piece, there's a budget piece, and costs do go up. If you look at the Board of Ed budget, right, page 11, at the bottom of page 11 is the total certified FTE. So, I just want to reference that because I understand what you're saying, enrollment's going down, class sizes are nice, you picked the lowest one. I'm going to point out that they vary between 15 in one grade to almost 20 in another grade and we have a range. But if you go to page 11 and you look at the, the page, it starts in 2016, 17, which was the year I became superintendent. Coincides, that's the number of years we have here. And it shows the changes in staff over that time. So, I'm going to take you to the bottom where it shows the totals, right, of those several pages. And when I started, we had 198.13, because it's portions of time, certified staff. We've closed a school, we've restructured, we've restructured programs, we've eliminated some and put new ones in. We've provided new supports for students because we all know what the need is in this town. And I can tell you that our free and reduced lunch population, I have the numbers here, I can tell you, it's doubled in my tenure here in 10 years and we all know the need. We see it every single day with the students and families that come to us. So, I, I have those stories too.
Concerned by the few who are signing up for free lunches because they have to pay their taxes.
But we have adjusted staff and I, I'm not saying this is enough. We continue to work. This is a year that I am proposing, and the Board is proposing, after spending their five weeks looking at the budget, that we are maintaining staff. So, that's what this budget represents. But we've made bold moves in the last couple of years of reducing staff and generating programs that meet our strategic planning and I think are responsive to the needs of the community and are meeting the needs of the children in the community. In the end, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it and we've been a partner in that and we've come back in April and said, "We have these savings." We moved health insurance twice as the Board of Ed in the last three years to try to get savings and we're realizing that. We closed a school, a huge community piece and we did that work. So, we're partnering and I've said this to you before, we are partners in this. I don't sit back, the Board doesn't sit back, my administrators cross their arms and say, "Well, budgets go up." Right? I can tell you every line item, they can tell you every line item, most of my Board can tell you every line item, just like you're doing with the town budget and now you're doing with ours. So, in the end, it is what this community can sustain. We are partners with that. But we have a, we have an obligation and the Board-
And this community sustains this. That's my bottom line.
But, but again, that is part of, we've brought you the most financially responsible budget that we can, under statute and what our requirements are, to provide for the needs of the students in the community. In the end, it becomes this conversation and this work and unfortunately, it is the hard work of the council at this point, along with the town manager, to have the conversations with us, say, "We can't afford it," whatever that is.
I just think, looking down the line at the next few years of enrollment, the next 10 years of enrollment predictions, there are going to be a lot of very hard choices.
There's going to be more changes. I don't, we've made huge choices in the last four years.
It may not be ideal, it may not be the dream of the Board of Education, but it has to be what we can afford.
So, and, and you're characterizing it, the dream budget, and I'm going to counter that a little bit.
Well, no, I'm using the wrong word, but I always, I mean, whenever we get the, well, in the past, we've had the preface from Erica or from whoever the Board of Education is.
Correct.
And they talk about the aspirations that they have for the education of the children in Clinton.
Correct.
And, I mean, we all want as the best that we can have.
Of course we do, at the best cost and at a reasonable cost that the town can afford and sustain. 100%, I've said that from day one in this role and my Board says it too. And we have gotten to a point where I think, "This is a good budget, but we can't afford it." And I've heard that from you. I, that's, that's not something we take lightly, it's not something that we haven't dug in and really worked to find those savings. We're coming in with a budget that's, that's pretty low and if you look at our per pupil costs, which there's a graph in here, that shows over the last 10 years and shows us compared to surrounding towns, we've contained that in the last eight years. We are lower than just about everybody around us by several thousand dollars and that graph is here in your budget book. Again, it's context, right? And, and it's context to the fact that costs do go up. The town budget has gone up, our budget has gone up. We all need to work together to contain it. And the questions about regionalization and can we go out to bid more, can we really push our brokers, we are doing that, but we're open to, you know what, let's go back and say, "Show me those five people. Let's do it." And maybe there's one more. But, we're not, the Board of Ed is not taking this lightly, they're not coming in with just an aspirational budget. We're making changes, we're making bold changes that aren't easy to do. And they've taken some backlash on, but they've done it because it's the right thing to do for the kids, but it's the right thing to do for the community. And there were a lot of people saying, "Don't close Pearson, don't close Pearson." Right? And there was a lot of pressure on that. We didn't close Pearson to just save money, although we did, and I'm going to send that to everybody. We closed Pearson because we need to sustain our schools and our school communities and our programs. And having a fourth building that was very small with lots of empty space in our facilities drives up capital, it drives up operating and you're maintaining staff that you don't necessarily, it's duplicative, only because you have an extra building. So, the staff reductions are partly because of the moves that we've made. And you're right, when you look at enrollment, I put it in here. I want you to see it. I've been talking about it, my Board's been talking about it. There will be more changes over the next five years unless things turn around and enrollment start to go up, which they may. But right now, we're seeing that and we're making the adjustments. This year, we're not making staffing adjustments, we're not. This is the first budget I brought without a lot of reductions. And people have been laid off and not had a job with us the following year. Those aren't easy to do, but we've done them because we need to sustain as a community and as a school district. So, I do understand, we're open to the conversation, but-
People, that cashier who was in tears at Joblot in one, every time they're talking about this, that and the other.
I think that's one of the things that we get caught up in. And the reality is, is that we, we put education against town budget. So, we have an education budget and we do need to have what we have on the education side. They are making adjustments. The reality is, is we need economic development to help offset on the, on the operational side, which would help offset the increases that the education budget's going to have. You have 79% of their budget is union jobs and, and, and benefits. I mean, those are going to go up. You can't, I mean, how are you going to control those? I mean, so there's going to be those numbers that increase on you.
Are you asking?
Well, I'm just-
Control those?
Well, what I'm saying, well, what I'm saying is control them, but you're, there's still going to be an increase, it's a union job. So, are they going to go in and you're going to flatline the union workers, then you're not going to get, you know, you're going to have issues then keeping teachers. Because then teachers will, even though they'll find other jobs with, that are better paying jobs. When, you know, she's talking about working together, that's how it's got to get done because that's the only way it can get done. Because you can't pit the education against the town budget like we always do, because then it's, you know, they're always going up, we're always going down. Well, why is it them against, I mean, it's us. It's not we against them, it's us. I understand taxes are going up, I get all that. But that also has to do with the fact that we don't have any economic development going on. We do now, but we haven't in the past. So, we're, if we're not, if we're not increasing our, you know, baseline revenue on the, on the operational side, then these are going to hurt more. And that's, you know, that's the way I look at it and I understand it, I understand these increases happen, but at the end of the day, you know, down the road, they're going to happen. And how do we offset that? We have to have economic development and we have to be, you know, we have to bring that into town, because that's what you need. You need that in order to maintain a good school district. Want the people to come, you've got to have a good school district. I mean, they all work hand in hand, but it's, in this town, it's always been us against them and that's crazy. Crazy.
I would just like to say, if you have the opportunity to talk with this woman again, I would direct her to the Fair Rent Commission.
She was asking me how, what she does when she has to default on her taxes, because she can't keep the rent billing and paying her tax, paying her taxes.
So, if you direct her to the Fair Rent Commission, an increase of 10% is not appropriate and that's why the Fair Rent Commission is created. But please also direct her to Human Services.
Trust me, we have all been dealt with the Fair Rent Commission and know exactly how that winds up with the manufactured homes. But anyway, okay, moving on, somebody else, go ahead.
Anybody else? Can I just?
Are you going to be going through this?
I, I can go through line item by line item, I'll do whatever you want me to do.
I'd rather not.
Right, right, so-
But we talked already, she said-
But I do have another question.
Yeah, so, however you would like me to do this, I want you to have the information you need.
I just would like to know, because it seems to me like the custodian business at Elliott, you've added a custodian and you've taken away a sub-custodian, am I correct?
Yeah, so, so it's really the way that we're budgeting the money, the number of people is staying the same. So, if we go to custodians and maintenance on this page, which number there? And then we'll go to that line item, Tim, because you're absolutely right, you, you saw it and noted, noted it.
13.
What is it, 13? Thank you. So, on page 13, and, and honestly, you know, as we have to put together the budget and track it and report it to the state, there are sometimes small moves we make to put it in the appropriate line item and I'm happy to explain that. So, if you look at, at the custodian and maintenance staff on this page, you see that at, from last year, we had five custodians at Joel, we moved fourth grade over and we maintained those five custodians. At Pearson, we reduced those custodians, actually, I'm sorry, from 1819 to 1920, we went up a half custodian at Joel. And then, we reduced the two and a half at Pearson, the half moved to Joel. We kept Elliott the same, we kept Morgan the same and our maintenance crew. So, we overall, coming into this year, as it relates to some of what Carol was talking about, we reduced two custodians because we were, we closed Pearson. Even though we moved the students, we only moved half over. So, the line item part is what's confusing, Tim, and that's what you're bringing up. So, I'm going to turn to that page and which one are you in? Elliott, right?
Yeah, page 27.
We did this in each of the, the groups, so you should see, in the custodian and part-time sub-custodian line, there's, there's changes and you can kind of track it, but the money isn't always exactly there, because it was under budgeted. So, if we look at Elliott's, it's page 27 and it's down towards the bottom and you see that the custodians listed are four, right? And then, the number there is an increase of 43,297, right? But if you look at the sub-custodians, right, it was one and it goes to zero. So, the total number of custodians in, at Elliott are the same. It's just the line item that we're attributing the salary to. So, in 1920 column, you see three custodians, those represent our full-time custodians and the total salary, okay? Down below, you see one sub-custodian for 34,653, right? That represents that, two part-time custodians equals one, but it's two people. And that number is what gets moved up in the new budget into the custodian line. And part of it is, this line says sub-custodians, but the way it's been tracked is if they were a part-time custodian, they were budgeted in that line and if they, and any subs that we bring in, there was always a small amount for sub-custodians. So, it, it doesn't make sense to me, if the line item truly is sub-custodians, we should be budgeting for all of our custodians, whether they're part-time or full-time, in the custodian line. So, we moved anybody who was in the sub-custodian line who works for us as a part-time employee- So we moved anybody who was in the sub-custodian line who works for us as a part-time employee into that line item. So the total number goes from a final budget of 152, 615, to 173, 759. And you can see we moved money, but you can also see that our actual right now is at 162 because of our sub-custodian line. And so we, we increased it a little just based on subs. The other thing we're doing, though, is we're not calling in subs when someone calls out. We're actually adjusting our cleaning on a basis, unless they're gonna be out a period of time, and so we're working on that to reduce those sub-costs, and just if someone calls out sick, or has a day off based on their contract, that we're not always bringing in a sub for that, so that we just adjust our cleaning and we can still maintain our buildings. And that's something my director is working on, what's the alternate map if you're down a person, and, and what does the cleaning look like? The other thing we have done, and it's not related, but I'll throw it out there, is if you look at the overtime lines, overtime, especially in the maintenance, we've really curtailed overtime, and we've been able to kind of meet that and make adjustments in the way that we operate on a regular basis. The only, you know, overtime costs are when we have weather, and people have to come in to clear the schools to open. And then the other place where our overtime costs in each of the buildings are, is to keep the buildings open on weekends for Park and Rec. So we pay overtime to our custodians, and we cover that cost, it's not paid to us by Park and Rec. So if you look at the overtime, our custodians, most of that is our weekends from basically October through March. We have our buildings open every Saturday, Sunday at Elliott and Morgan, and that's what the overtime costs are. Otherwise, it's just snow removal, and that's it. So it's a line item change, and I do realize it's a little confusing because of that, but that's what happened at both Joel, Elliott, and Morgan, you'll see that movement of money.
I'm gonna ask one question, but I hate to even ask this question.
I know, because I'm long-winded in my answers.
No, no, no.
But I want people to understand.
But I'm, I'm looking at three to five years from now. Is there discussion, and I'm looking through your strategic plans and whatnot, but of changing the school year, you know, right, right now, 180 days?
To go to 180 from 183?
No, we're 180 now, approximately, right?
So we, we actually contract with our staff for 183?
No, I understand, 183, right. But the Europeans, 190 to 200, the Asians, 210 to 220. Is there any discussion that we are going to go more in the future? No?
No. If anything, there's discussion, why do we do three extra days? Because it costs money?
Oh, I know, I don't, but, but, but I understand that, but again, what's our, what's our goal? What's our, what's our mission statement?
Sure.
The best education is possible.
Yeah.
So we may have to cost more.
Okay.
But have you ever discussed it?
We have not discussed increasing, because we fight, we fight every year to just sustain what we have and advance our program, so, no, it has not been a discussion of holding to add, add days, it's kind of holding on to what we have and not reducing that back because we see value in it. I would tell you that our population, if we could expand, you know, it could definitely benefit. We do, we are required to offer extended school year within our special services department to students who qualify for that. We also have offered, the board has offered a program for our English language learners sometime in the summer, and that's something that is part of our summer school line items, in order to help students who are learning English to not regress, because there is a real reality to summer regression.
Well, that's, that's, study after study that shows that.
Yeah, yeah.
Have we, have we just-
It's really a bottom line, Mark, it's a bottom line money issue, totally money issue.
But if, if it's the right thing to do, then we should have to address the money. Because Chris Luther and I have already worked on this, it's class size.
I love, that's why I hired them.
Chris and I have got it all figured out.
That's why I hired them. I, I mean, I love the idea, to be honest, you know, there's increasing the number of days for students, there's definitely families who would love that, right? Because the outside of school year and camps and all of those, there's families that would hate it, that we're mandating more days because they want that time. And there is a balance to a school year.
What's the best for the student?
So, so best for the student, honestly, is a 12, 12-month experience, and I don't know where that magic number is, 200 days, you know, 190 days, 220, but-
Or even break up differently.
So, so I was out in Las Vegas for a number of years, and they had year-round elementary and middle schools, and you would go to school for four to six weeks, research kind of supports that. Get a bit of a break, you come back, and you never lose that full regression. And it became kind of a community thing, but all of their buildings were air-conditioned, costs go up if you're gonna go through the summer, and our buildings aren't necessarily designed for that. So there's a variety of factors that kind of press to this. There's definitely a balance in the number of days off for kids, absolutely there is. And so I don't think, you know, 265 days is best for kids. Do I think kids could be in school a little bit longer, and we could find that balance? But I would rather see, rather than from August through, you know, mid-July, I'd rather see more of a year-round concept, and I think research would support that, of about six weeks in, two weeks off, six weeks in, two weeks off, or something along those lines. And there are models out there that have done it. Most times, they're doing it because of space, and they're not really increasing the number of days, but they're increasing the concentration of instructional time, and then cutting down the amount of regression that can happen.
I'm not even talking about number of days initially, it's really the summer issue.
That, that idea, yeah, of you get regression in the summer, and being able to spread that out is really probably a model that works, but it doesn't necessarily gain a lot of resonance. So that wouldn't be big costs, it would be facility costs, and it would be huge lifestyle changes for both staff and families.
Yes, well, we don't-
Some loved it, some loved it, and some, some moved from the schools that were year-round and said, "I don't wanna do that, I wanna be on a regular cycle." And then the big thing was, the high schools, none of them did it, and when you transitioned to the high school, if you were in a year-round schedule, you would go right into the high school and have, you know, be in school almost a year without that break. So that district was huge, and they got away from it once they had their building set and they didn't have space issues. They really don't do year-round anymore. But I think instructionally, intense periods of time, a break, intense periods of time, overall, would work better. I'm just glad you didn't bring up the start and end times, because there's a lot of research on that, too.
Oh, you flip it for the young to the old, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. But we will be going into new strategic planning next year, so that is something, as we look to the next three years, Carol's point to yours-
I'll send Chris my notes.
Oh, you, you're gonna need to participate in our forums, but those are things, you know, that I think we have to get ahead of and think about, but there hasn't been a lot of, of talk or movement. And then you have sports and other things that drive our schedules, summer camps, traditions that families have that make it a little harder to move a whole district there, unless everybody was doing it. So you got a long-winded answer here?
Anybody else?
I appreciate the difficulty of, of what you guys have to do, and, and the fact that you serve in this capacity to make these decisions. So in representing the Board of Ed, we're here to have those discussions. If you have additional questions, please don't hesitate to reach out, and I'll be here as you guys are making decisions, so if I can provide any context at that point, I'm happy to do so. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody coming.